For seven weeks and this is not my normal speaking voice, but if you can't understand anything at any point, raise your hand and I will try and enunciate differently. My name is Fay Flieger. I'm in the chair. Ladies and gentlemen in the back, if there's going to be a side conversation, please take them into the hallway because we have people who are old and have old ears and it's hard to hear when there's too many conversations going on. Please silence your cell phones or put them on vibrate at this time so that we can be respectful of everyone who is in attendance. If you need to have a side conversation or meet with your buddies or whatever, please do it in the hall outside, well away from the door so that everyone can hear what's going on in the meeting. We will be having people discuss their illnesses and their claims. We would ask that you make no attribution statements after this meeting of what you hear from anyone. It's respectful, it's the thing to do, and the reason we're here is to help each other. So if someone makes some comment, please don't use their name with what they said if you mention it later on. And that's just, that's just so we can help each other and do the right thing. We're going to limit anyone's comments to three minutes. If you feel you need to use the microphone when we get to the comment section, please come forward and then we'll use this microphone from this location. It doesn't have a very long cord, so we're, you're going to have to come up to the front to do that. And once again, your initial comments will be limited to three minutes. I'm not going to ring a bell or a buzzer, but we're just going to ask that you be mindful of everyone's time. So good afternoon. Welcome to our first town hall meeting. The DIAB board has been... Are you going to click? I don't have a clicker.
You can't get good help these days.
The DIAB board was formulated because we've received so much resistance from the US Department of Labor in getting the things done under Part B. So the town hall meeting today is our first attempt for outreach and collecting the information that the Department of Labor does not collect and does not to report to Congress on. What are DIAB's duties? To advise the President and Congress and pay federal agencies involved with EEUICPA concerning the review and approval of the Department of Labor's site exposure matrix. Two, conduct periodic peer reviews of and approve medical guidance for Part E claims. Examine, um, Part E claims with respect to weighing of the claimant's evidence. Number three, obtain periodic review of evidentiary requirements for Part B claims related to lung disease regardless of the approval status. Four, provide oversight of the Department of Labor's industrial hygienists, Department of Labor staff physicians, and DOL's consulting physicians and their reports to ensure quality, objectivity, and consistency. Five, to coordinate exchanges of data like what we're going to try and do here today. Of findings and with the advisory board on radiation and work for health, which is under Part B. You probably have been involved with that with the special exposure cohort for Rocky Flats. Six, other activities that we deem necessary. From time to time, the Department of Labor takes, goes off on a wild tangent and we have to herd him back in. And the only way we find out about it is from claimants when we hear strange things are going on. So in order to do that, ensure timely and uniform and adequate compensation of covered employees and where applicable, survivors of such employees suffering from illnesses incurred by such employees and performance of the duty, of their duties for the Department of Energy and certain contractors and subcontractors. Go ahead, Ted. Oh, back one. Give me clicks. The board is made up of sick workers and family members and people who have been working with this program for a number of years. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but know that the board members have a wide and diverse background. We're dealing with the Department of Labor in this program. Each of us has our own area of expertise, which is why as a board, we work so well together. We each have a little kernel of the whole court on the cob and we eventually get it all done. So the board will function until Congress amends the Energy Employees Occupational Illness Compensation Act to create a board because one is needed and our efforts to get one have gone unanswered. So we decided to do it on our own because no one said we couldn't. And if they try to, we're going to tell them anyway, we're going to do it. Go ahead, Ted. Wrong way. This is our first town hall meeting, so next time we'll have a clicker. So meet the board. I'm Fay Flieger, the President. I worked at Hanford. I'm an injured worker from Hanford. I was involved in a severe chemical exposure in 2002 that damaged my lungs. Deb? Stop. Hugh Stevens is not here today. He's also on the board. We have Terri Berry here and Terri is the wife of a old Rocky Flats worker. So Terri has been with you through the struggle for the Rocky Flats SEC. And I have to say she's been instrumental in getting a lot of the things added to that SEC. You have no idea of the work that goes on. We don't just do this one Saturday a month. Most of us grab our phone and work from bed on our emails. Then during the day, we're on our computer and then at night, we're back on our phone doing our emails and stuff. So it's, it is a calling that we feel a need to perform. Delane Blase is not able to be here with us today. Stephanie Carroll is here and Stephanie has... In 2002, Stephanie Carroll, the granddaughter of a Portsmouth, Hanford and Nevada test site nuclear weapons worker began assisting claimants navigate the EEUICPA process. Stephanie specializes in lung conditions and chronic bryllium disease. She is an active member of the National Bryllium Health Safety Committee, which promotes activities to help people better understand and prevent bryllium-induced illnesses. As founder of Nuclear Worker Advocacy, she is committed to seeing that nuclear workers get the justice and compensation they deserve. Maurice Copeland was not able to be here with us today. Donna Hand is here. That's Donna's best picture too. Hang on just a second. I have something from Donna. Donna is a paralegal, has a paralegal background and have researched a lot from the beginning and is familiar with the statute and the federal regulations. She is well-versed in NIOSH's policies and procedures when it comes to dose reconstructions. She is also an authorized representative for claimants and has been objecting to and appearing at hearings for claimants with the Department of Labor's Energy Employees Programs. She is also a member of the Bryllium Health and Safety Committee. Dr. David Menuda is not able to be with us here today, but we have Deb Jerrison as our appointee person. Janet Michelle was not able to be here today nor neither was Ken Siller, but you can see that a number of the board members took the time to travel from across country to be here today. I traveled from Washington State. Deb Jerrison traveled from Ohio. Terri Berry traveled from Craig. Donna Hand traveled from, I forget your name.
Tampa, Florida.
Tampa, Florida. We also have guests that I'm going to introduce today and one of the first guests, go ahead. We will have Congressman Promatte joining us. You're pressing it too many times. It has a slight delay. Congressman Promatte, when he comes in, he will be speaking to you, but we wanted to do the regular introductions and then when he comes in, we'll break and he's going to be speaking. We have Malcolm Nelson. He is the ombudsman for the Energy Employees Occupational Illness Compensation Program and he traveled to be with us today from Washington DC. Malcolm is your advocate. Malcolm has an email address. He has a toll-free number. And he'll be available. He has, one of his representatives at the back table as well. We have Stephanie Cross from Senator Mark Udall's office. Stephanie, did she make it? No. Stuart Feinauer from Congressman Gerald Porless's office. Stuart is in the back. And did you have something you wanted to read? Did you have a statement today? No. And then we have Maria Velazos at the back and she is with the Building Trades National Medical Screening Program. And I'm going to plug her program for her right now. If you have not had your screening, you need one. If you've had your screening more than three years ago, it's time for another one. So please see her and have, fill out a card. She can contact you later so that they can schedule that. It's very important. We're finding a lot of lung diseases and it's not normal to not be able to breathe when you get old. Let me repeat that. It is not normal to huff and puff when you get old. And just because you previously smoked, it's not a reason to be denied under this program. So it's one of the things we're finding. We're finding a lot of bryllium disease. We're finding significant numbers of asbestos disease. We're also finding a lot of other lung diseases that are attributable to toxic exposures. And those are covered conditions under this program. If you don't take care of your lungs, they'll affect your heart. This is the talk I give to all the workers whenever I see them. You need to get the screening done because it's not normal to not be able to breathe. Okay, so we'll move on because we don't have a... We don't have coverage. Why do we call this meeting? DIAB has undertaken to provide oversight for the Energy Employees Program. So DIAB needs your help and as we call our board DIAB, it's much easier than the alphabet soup we put in between. So we need to have information from you to be able to gauge how Department of Labor is managing the program. Because your records are personal and private, the only way we would get them is through your permission or from you personally. So the purpose is to collect documents to determine if claims are being determined in a consistent manner using the best science. Not what somebody decides is their idea, but the best science. So our findings will be forwarded to the Department of Energy Employees Occupational Illness Compensation as well as to the Congress, the President, and our friend Malcolm. All documents provided to DIAB will be redacted. That means all of your personal identifiable information will be removed before they're used in a report. Deb has brought equipment to be able to scan your documents. If you want, if you don't want to leave a copy with us or you didn't bring a copy, we also have the ability to make some copies as well. So in order to review your documents, we would need them from you. And then in order to submit them, they would all be redacted. No personally identifiable information. That would mean your birth date, your name, anytime like Bob appears in a report, Bob would be taken out. So why we have this meeting is Part E is a big part of your benefits under this program. It's how you get wage loss and it's how you get your impairment rating. Those programs need to be managed, administered consistently. We're finding between the five, four regional offices and the DC Fab, they're not consistent decisions on the same diseases. Our goal is to fix that. So we're going to wait for Congressman Promatte to come. And now what we're going to do is open the floor for anybody that has questions, even if you think they're far afield. If they're too far afield, like, you know, who's going to win the next Super Bowl, we probably won't talk about those. But if you have questions about your claim, your claim process, what to do next, who can help you, now's the time that we've allowed for you to speak. And we're going to take as much time today as that takes. If you brought documents with you and you have questions, you know, we're here to do that for you as well. Did any of the other panel members have anything to add at this time?
I would just like to say, this guy, this is your meeting. This is your chance to voice. I know you've done it in other meetings as well, but we want to stand by you and we have to prove the documentation that this is helping all across the nation. And the more people that we have that complain about it and we have documents and data about this, the more Malcolm can go to legislation, the more that the legislators can say, no, we need to address this, everything. So this needs to be done and this is your meeting.
And we'd like to hear any complaints that you have about the process, about how you're treated by the Department of Labor. Are you respected? Are you believed when you talk about your work history? Do they inform you that they've got all their records, all your records, when they ask you to produce records to, to prove your claim? If you go to a hearing, do they tell you you can get a copy of your file so that you're prepared for your hearing? Or are you going there just not knowing what is going to happen? We want to know what your experience is like and it's going to be documented. Malcolm is going to document it also when we turn it over to him and it does get, great report is done by Malcolm that gets turned over to Congress. And the more complaints we hear here, the more diverse complaints and the better. These are going to be documented, so it's really important to hear what's happening. It's not just going to end with this meeting.
Okay, with that being said, question?
I just wanted to say that I worked on our claim for a year and a half and it was probably one of the most stressful things I have ever done in my life. They wanted me to produce things that I didn't know if I needed to lay an egg, so I had something. I, I just was just baffled. I do believe they wanted me to go away. They wanted, I just felt so frustrated that it was easy to quit. The days that I wanted to quit, Vern didn't want me to quit and then when he wanted to quit, I didn't. We made it through. It took me a year and a half. And one day I got a letter in the mail saying we were denied. And I called him and I said, you know what, I'm mad now. It's like, what in the hell do you want? I have given you everything I possibly could. The next day, we got, I got a phone call from a lady out in Washington, very, very nice lady. She had our claim go through and we were awarded, but I think, you know what, you guys, don't give up. Don't give up. It's, it's tough, but if there was, you know, just stay strong.
One of the things you may not know, and it's not clear in the wording, because remember, everything has to have some legal wording in what they give you. Can everybody hear me without the mic? Yeah? No? Okay. One of the things you may not understand in the wording and the letters, under this program, under Part B, even if you're denied, the claim is never completely closed until great grandchildren are deceased. Okay? So you can reopen the claim with new evidence as long as there's a valid beneficiary. Under Part E, the rules are different because the right of successorship and inheritance are different. But in most cases, until the spouse is deceased, the claim can be reopened. There's not as much inheritable benefit under E. So when they tell you your claim is closed, it's only closed because they decided there was inadequate evidence. The claim can be administratively reopened with, under a couple of conditions. New evidence, you got to doctor the right to write the letter. Or if you have an additional condition to claim and then ask for the other one to be reopened, they'll do them together. The difference being, reopening administratively under the rules is 180 days. If you file a new claim, they must respond to you in 30 days if they're working on the claim. So I try and combine a new claimed condition when I work on claims for claimants with reopenings. And a lot of times, there are conditions that are hand in hand anyway. They have to look at them together. They're never completely closed. And you're right, I sometimes thought when my claim was going through that they just wanted me to walk away. My claim took five years. Five years. What I've always told the Department of Labor and the Department of Energy is that I'm a terrier on your pant leg and I'm never going away. The other thing I tell them is they pissed off the wrong little Dutch woman, but... So never give up and sometimes the way they write the letters is confusing. I'm not sure if it's not on purpose. They tell me it's not. But what, you have the right to call the claims examiner and they're supposed to respond to your phone calls. If they don't respond to your phone calls, please let Malcolm know. They're supposed to answer in three, three days was the rule in Seattle for a while. I don't know what it is now. You have the right to call them and ask them in plain English, what do you want? And they cannot just read you the letter. Not everybody has a college degree, you know, that you have the right to have that told you in plain English. There was another hand in the back. Yes, ma'am?
My question is, I worked at Rocky Flats. What if I die? Can I, can I have a claim? Can my siblings?
Under Part B, if you have one of the 22 accepted cancers, that's inheritable to your, to your siblings if you have no children. Or your spouse. It goes spouse first, then siblings. If you have a Part E claim, what's considered a toxic exposure claim, unless you have a child that is dependent, a disabled child living with you, then there's no inheritability under E past a spouse. Does that make sense? Oh, hands are going up. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. I don't know if any of you have gone on the EEUICPA, DOL website. This morning I did. This expansion of the SEC is not working very well. They've settled about 106 claims since the start of the year. The problem with that is there have been 360 new claims filed. The other thing that we've got is a situation where this thing is a gridlock and it's been that way around the Denver area for many, many years that this program has been in existence. I would ask that Malcolm, every time you come here, bring a stack of your reports to Commerce so people can have access.
Yeah, awesome.
If you have some, good. Your mind read. Mine's a short story, but we'll get on with that.
Okay, I just want to bring out that at the back table with Building Trades is Malcolm.
It's Amanda. That's the, what year is that? That's the 12. We still would have gone 13 before.
What's going to happen to be screened as it came? They said they would contact us in six to eight weeks and nobody's contacted us.
Is that, is that, what group is that? What screening?
Is that the former worker or the building and trades?
What screening? Do you know who's screened? There are two different agencies that could screen you. Which one do you know? Was it Building Trades or was it?
Former worker.
Former worker. Do you know? Do you have a letter from them or any, any documents from them?
Or what union were you in? And now tell us. Were you in the steelworkers union at Rocky Flats?
Okay, Maurice is going to...
Sir, I'll tell you what. Why don't you, Amanda, if you could get, look into your name and we're trying to follow up to see, you know, give us your name and a phone number. We will follow up and try to find out what happened with your response. Okay, sir?
Because there are two screening programs. One is the former worker screening program and one is the building and trades workers. So if you're a DOE employee, you go through the former worker screening program. If you're a construction worker or you came there or a subcontractor, then you go through the buildings and trades. Right? So, but either way, they still should respond to you.
I can tell you that the former worker program, because that's what I got lumped into as a planner scheduler, does take longer to respond and their, their appointments are way further out with their contractor to do the appointment than Building Trades. Building Trades has it down to a pretty well-oiled machine. The other, the National Medical Screening Program, the former worker firm, does not. It still happens, but it just takes them longer to get their gears going.
There are a couple other comments. The reason I brought up your report to Commerce is because in the body of that 2012 report, you claim that there were only 11 complaints filed from Rocky Flats workers that are survivors. Now, my problem with that is according to the data that was posted this morning, there have been 8,600 claims filed that are hanging in the bank. So I would say that there is some disconnect there between the number that's hanging in a bank versus the complaints that you were reporting.
My report only talks about the people who called my office. That's the first thing. Secondly, when I did know...
We're not breath that. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
The second thing I do want to note, and as I already said, many people who call my office simply tell me about their issues and they don't necessarily identify where they worked. So sometimes at the end of the conversation, we realize we have a lot of information of what we don't have is where that person worked. And a lot of times people call us and they just start talking, you know, just a half an hour later and it's kind of like, don't want to go back there. So, you know, we realize those numbers are not 100% accurate. My, I, my feeling, what I tell my staff is the main thing is to try to address the issue the person has and not to worry about those little like where you worked and your birthday and all of that. We try more to try to record the types of issues that people are raising.
That's why I was saying, yeah, I'll sit down and shut up for a while. We desperately need the data that's been gathered at the Washington State University College Pharmacy with the transuranic registry data that involves all, many of the former workers. They've had several whole body dissections and radiolytic analysis. And I believe that they have the work records, they have the dose records, and they have the observable health effects. And I think that that would go a long way in answering a lot of people's questions about, you know, their current predicaments.
Terri has an answer for you.
Well, not an answer. I'm agreeing with you. And I'm going to share this very quickly. I discovered on Saturday evening that an incident that my husband has requested from Department of Energy for almost 20 years, Department of Energy could never find it. I found through an email from NIOSH that they have that incident. Okay? Now, obviously, I'm quite upset about that. One of the things that ANWAG is going to do is we're going to push NIOSH to have access to that database. It's called the SRDB, Site Research Database. And there's all kinds of documents in there. They have, they have the doses and incidents and we need that in order to get our, our claims paid.
For those in the room who don't know what ANWAG is...
ANWAG is the Alliance of Nuclear Worker Advocacy Group. We've been around since 2005. We're all members. Well, Malcolm is the supporter. And a lot of you are members of it.
That's why I have a thing.
You promised.
We have, I bet I lied. I should be running for office. We have 22 years of workers that are still shut out of this system and they need to be recognized and this thing needs to be expanded. Another thing is this is a ridiculous system how anyone that came down with those 22 health effects after 1983, those couldn't have been work-related.
You need to know, and I can give you some information. Rocky Flats and Hanford, which I'm well aware of, I'm intimately involved with the next SEC expansion there. Rocky Flats and Hanford worked hand in glove. We made the stuff or we did a process and then you guys continued it. The next Hanford SEC is under consideration and that same information from Hanford, because we provided you materials, is going to be used towards the extension of the Rocky Flats. That doesn't mean it's going to happen quickly. They're supposed to discuss the interviews they just completed in Hanford this summer. I did have a chance to read them and it looks to me like they're not going to be able to calculate the dose, which means that the next SEC would go forward. And because Hanford and Rocky Flats worked very much hand in glove, a lot of the data used for the Rocky Flats SEC came from the Hanford SEC because we have really good records and we have Pacific Northwest National Lab that's been co-located and they made lots of records that they couldn't hide. So there, it's pumping through the works. They're probably going to do another set of interviews for your expansion, but it's not going to happen quickly. I've never seen an SEC extension happen in less than two years. So the fact that there is data that's coming out of Hanford is very encouraging and that there's data located at the other repositories. But you need to be proactive in this measure. You have documents at home that you need to provide. If you want to provide them to DIAB, we'll make them available. If you want to provide them to DOL and NIOSH, that would be a good thing to do because if you have the evidence of an incident, an accident, or an off-normal occurrence that you were aware of, that you don't think was adequately documented by the management, your information could be crucial. And keeping it at home and keeping it under your bushel basket is not going to help anybody. Yes, ma'am?
Fay, I know that you said that Rocky Flats worked hand in glove in Hanford, but Rocky Flats is unique in that there was a grand jury who found Rockwell guilty. Flats is unique in that there was a grand jury who found Rockwell guilty.
That's not what I was referring to.